Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You are watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Athens Select Board Meeting.
We do come to order. The municipal voters of the Town of Athens are hereby notified and warned to act on the following articles on the 27th of April 2023 at 6:00 p.m. at the Athens Community Center, the former elementary school. Article, as we do this, there is a sign in for the checklist in the back that if you see anybody come in, or if you haven't been checked off, please do that. If there are anybody who is not a voter, you cannot speak unless it's with the consent of the entire board. The meeting is run by robust rules of orders. We're not in conflict with Vermont law. And anybody that's called on to speak can speak, but you will not be called on again until everybody else has had an opportunity to speak. And everything should be addressed to the moderator and not colloquy between members of the town meeting. Article one, to see if the town shall vote to approve $598,302.95 with $478,895.95 to raise by taxes to defray town expenses. Denise?
I make that motion for the town to approve the town budget of $598,302.95 with $478,895.95 to be raised by taxes to defray town expenditures.
All right, is there a second to that?
No second.
Four seconds, then. Is there discussion? Yes.
My biggest question is, the total tax-related revenue and the total revenues altogether are so much higher than the expenditures. Can someone explain that?
Yeah. It's...
I mean, not that the totals are different.
One of the board here will...
The change, it's the change from '22 to this budget.
Say that again.
It's the change, the change of the tax-related revenues goes up so much higher than the expenditures do. In fact, the expenditures now go down.
So last year, we did have a surplus that we applied, and that's why there was such a great difference last year. The reason why that the expenditures are higher this year is because the cost of things have gone quite a bit. And the revenue that we need to raise is only $478,000. And is that, did I misunderstand your question?
Well, except that, that is like almost $120,000 more than last year's figure for tax, for the taxes, for the taxes line. Whereas the expenditure, total expenditures actually now go down about $20,000, $19,000.
So the total revenue for the budgeted year, for this coming year, is $548,621.95. The total expenditures would be... The total expenditures being $632,621.95. Oh, you're right. I'm so sorry. I don't have, I was looking at the wrong one. I don't have the ready printed one with me.
Well, yeah, I'm sure there's an explanation, but...
So with... Cost of things go up, that's why the...
Yeah, because the actual expenditures go down in the new budget. Yet, the total tax-related revenue is budgeted to go up. Somehow, I mean, the bottom, bottom line of total revenues matches the expenditures. But I just don't understand why the tax-related revenue goes up so much.
There's less non-tax-related revenue this year is the main reason. We don't have a, we don't have a surplus from the previous year like we did last year. And we don't have as much federal grant money coming in as we did last year. So if you look at the other revenue lines from last year, there were, there were those things to offset what we needed to raise in taxes.
All right, yes. Did you happen to know what the surplus from '21 that carried over to '22 amounted to? So that helped get taxes down last year.
Right, yeah.
And we also had $45,000 in federal grants, which actually ended up being $58,000. So we invite it for revenues as well, which is what we'll versify with this document is with everybody else.
I actually crunched the numbers in our original town report, and the revenue apart from taxes has not changed. It's about $120,000, and that's about $85,000, not quite $85,000 less than the revenue apart from taxes last year. And it's about $54,000 less than revenue apart from taxes the year before. In fact, this is the, this is the least amount of revenue we've had coming in apart from taxes since 2019. So this way, the cost of everything going up is kind of, kind of like a double whammy. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd be interested in hearing the board speak to where and why the changes were made in terms of, I see things that were reduced, I see things that were increased. So if you can kind of give us some understanding as to how you made those decisions.
The things that were increased were because originally that we didn't have the exact figure for them. And then when the bills came in, that was the reason for the increase. The computer services. Computer services did go up quite a bit. I'm sorry, you got that? Computer services. Want to see what else went up? We cut out what we could cut out, yes. I was just looking for my notes from that evening. You see, besides the computer, we laid in services, which is something that we need for our security.
Right.
Do you have your notes from that evening, Jennifer?
Hang on, I'm looking for it. And we didn't have the assistant clerk. We cut out... We also cut the community center.
Cemetery?
We cut the cemetery. We cut the lawn care for some of the... Axles land.
I think the biggest increase was from the computer services.
Yeah, I believe it's $28,000.
Oh, so higher in this case. Part of that, you did get up, but that was in the original budget.
Yeah.
It was the higher price.
Okay. Yeah. Computer was at $28,000. And we cut the highway garage maintenance. We cut chloride?
Yep.
Yep, cut general supplies for the highway garage.
I did remember seeing an eight minutes from that meeting, something about trash and the possibility of a change as of May, and I don't see that reflected. I guess what I'm looking to understand here is, what's the impact going to be? How's it going to be felt by the voters of this town based on this budget and what's been touched? And is there a change in trash that's going to be put before the voters at some point in the near future that we ought to know and understand while we're voting here tonight?
We won't know the trash increase until May, if at all. If they're going to increase it, most likely it will increase. And I know the voters voted to keep trash in. That would be a major expense to take out of the budget. But then it would be upon everyone else to take care of their own trash. So we decided to keep it in the budget for now and see what the increase is.
So this budget maintains that as it exists?
As it is, yeah.
Through, from this year through 2023?
As to her point, the, there's quite, quite a lot taken out of the road maintenance of salt and sand. Well, not a lot for the city even. Is that going to have an impact? I mean, we're going to need that. I'm not sure why the stone went up and the salt and sand went down. Aren't we going to need, need those things come winter?
The salt budget went down, but we put it in the stone budget. So it really, we didn't lose any because with the mud seasons we've had last couple of years, we've been spending a lot on stone.
Yes.
And so we just kind of took from there and put it down to the stone so it would be more, you know.
Right.
It shouldn't have any effect on the roads at all for the tar roads that use the sand. We did take the chloride out that may have an effect on the dirt roads. The foreman seems to think he may have enough to get through this year without, you know, without having to order it, and that's why we cut it.
Yeah.
So, and we cut out the maintenance of the highway garage because we are going to need a new chloride tank. And they run $3,000 to $5,000 or more. And they are going to need a new fuel tank. And we elected not to concern us about that. I mean, it doesn't leak or anything, it's just the way the legs are on it.
Anybody else?
So I, I guess the surplus that was anticipated last year and didn't come through, and also the federal, especially, okay, see where the tax revenues have to make up for that. So are our municipal taxes going up? And if so, how much?
All right, go ahead, Jen. I, with a rough figure, because I'm not quite sure what the grand list is right now. The mention of $133 for municipal tax has been mentioned, which we've paid in the past, I think it was 2013, and before, we even paid more than that. It's a hard pill to swallow, but with inflation and the cost of fuel and everything else, you know, we've got a silver lining, maybe our school tax will down.
Yeah.
But we're not sure on that. That won't be until probably what, June, Halloween?
Yeah.
We won't know about that. So, yeah.
Anybody else? Yes.
I noticed for the number of places that the fuel costs changed between the first budget and the rewrite for second. And the amounts went down. My question is, how do we figure that with the rise in cost of fuel?
It's hard. We took some, because when we did the budget, we had anticipated higher fuel costs than what we paid last year. And we're hoping that maybe this year it'll be about the same. I mean, we do look into pre-buys for diesel fuel and heating oil for the three buildings, and we try to get the best price. I mean, last year, I believe we got $374 for heating oil with a guarantee if it goes down, the price for us would go down. And the diesel fuel was, I think, did I say $374?
You did.
It was $474, I'm sorry. And the diesel fuel was $0.25 over rat price. And that's the best we could do because some of the other dealers weren't even doing pre-buys. So, and we did notice through the year that the prices did go down and fluctuated. But we were guaranteed the lower price with the contract that we signed, so.
And we still have a little bit left. We have one more delivery, one more deliveries, let us be right?
No, I believe they ended in April.
April.
Anybody else? If not, are you ready for the question?
I want to request a paper ballot.
Are there seven people to screen? There are seven? Ready for the question? Article one, to see if the town shall vote to approve $598,302.95 with $378,895.95 to be raised by taxes to defray town expenses. A yes will be in favor of the article. A no will not be. If anybody has trouble coming up, one of the justices will, can go and pick it up for you. But don't have a brand or relative to that for you. Has everybody voted? That's a total of vote.
Right.
If so, I'll declare the ballot box closed. We'll keep over, no loins, continue, Captain Selly.
Could you, do I just pick up a copy at the office? Or the new one that's coming out?
No, they don't have a draft yet, but it will be available for the comments.
No, but what it does, what it is...
Results of your vote. 24 yes, 33 no. The article was defeated. Done.
Mr. Moderator, I move to reconsider this article, see if we can come up with a figure tonight.
Is there a second to that? We do need to pass the town budget. If people have a figure in mind, they certainly can offer that and bring that forward. So if there's somebody that has a figure. You have a figure, Linda. Linda, would that be the 574, 355, 36? Is that your motion? On the bottom, actual in 2022? Budget is 578.
574, 355, 36.
Let me hear that again. 574, more what? 355, 36. 355, 40 cents.
That was an actual figure of the year.
30 cents. So is that the figure, Linda, you want? Okay, is there a second to 574, 355, 32? Is there a second? There's a second. Is there discussion?
I have a question. So if we were to vote on a number, let's just say the one that was just given, do we then go through and decide how that split up the money expenses? Or is that something that like another committee does when we vote? Like, how does that work when we don't know how much is going where?
That would be, the budget committee and the select board would work on that and come up with the, we would be given the figure.
Do we then vote to approve how the money's spent? Because I know like with trash, that was like a concern.
That was the specific article that we had in the, in the warning for trash.
Approve this number.
Yeah.
You all then decide where goes what, and we then don't get to vote on that again? It's just whatever you guys decide goes where?
You get to vote this time, but no, you don't get to vote on them.
Okay, so you don't get to vote on individual ones, okay?
There won't be a, if this is approved, there won't be a third town meeting. Okay.
Okay, so as you rattle off numbers, it's just kind of a blurry jumble for me. Okay, so, as you rattle off numbers, it's just kind of a blurry jumble for me. Could you please tell me the numbers, maybe write it big on a blackboard for me, what the budget is? And what this number is that we're maybe voting on? And what is the difference? How much less is this amount that's being asked for?
When the number is about twenty-four thousand dollars.
Twenty-four thousand dollars, less, okay? Okay, and I, I just.
Can you see this?
Yeah, no, I, now I can see, now I can see it now that the number is.
Right, I'm not doing it yet. That's it, that's it.
That's the old one.
That's the old one, yes, that's the old one. Well, this is the, yeah, the old one, yes.
The defeated, the defeated number.
Okay. So, it's about twenty-four thousand dollars lower.
Sure.
Um, clarification then, so that number is going to be the total revenue that the board is looking to work from. How and when will we know then what the current amount is to be raised by taxes?
It will be the twenty thousand dollars plus the, the twenty-four thousand dollars.
It will just.
It'll be that thing.
From that?
Yeah.
With a calculation, it will be pretty close to how much we have to actually raise in taxes. It's, it's. Just because we're taking twenty-four thousand out of the budget.
Yes, sir.
I, I would like to hear from the budget committee. If that is a feasible, a reasonable, uh, task, are, are you going to be able to work with that number, a, a lower number? Or are you, like, down to the bones of what you, you know, tried to do up to this point and gotten down to the lowest number you possibly could? And now we're twenty-four thousand dollars less, is that going to be impossible for us? I mean, I don't know, I'm not working on the, with the budget committee, so.
I, I am not.
How do you guys feel about that?
I'm not the chair of the budget committee, I am on the budget committee. Things are going to roll that we're not, the town's not going to be happy with.
Amber, do you want to speak on that at all?
Um, going through the budget line by line with the select board, um, we had cut out as much as that we could. I mean, obviously, with the computer, there's the security stuff that we had to increase because we finally found out what the real number was. Um, we might end up having to not purchase stuff that we were hoping to purchase this year. Um, I know the town clerk is looking for a new computer, um, because they're having problems with theirs. Maybe we'll have to wait until next year. Um, there's some other items that, I don't know, I'm clapping my head with the second, that we might not be able to take care of until, I'll over here.
Oh.
Anybody else want to speak?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, the, the question of the trash collection was raised already, uh, probably four months and it had gone into the year, so we wouldn't, uh, you know, we wouldn't be able to reduce the budget by that, the thirty, full thirty-eight thousand and plus bag revenue going down. But, uh, is that, is, can that, can that even be on the chopping line? Does that take a special vote when people?
They would not take a special vote, but it, there's contractual issues with that. Um, so, that's not to be said that that will be the, the thing that will be cut. Um, and we can't talk that, we can't say that one way, the, the board can't say that one way or the other tonight. Yes?
I'm not trying to be a troublemaker here, but taxes are high enough in this town that people on a fixed income have a hard enough time reaching them as it is. My question is, with the Taylor Hill project still in question, if this budget is passed and the Taylor Hill project goes through, what does that mean for the budget and for the rest of us in town that are trying to make ends meet?
This, this budget does not have anything to do with that. They're two separate issues.
I understand that it's a separate issue, but my question is, if the Taylor Hill project goes through, that's going to be a financial concern for the town. What happens to us in town if we've approved a budget that is difficult enough to meet as it is? And then have more added on top of it if this project is turned over to the town?
I don't, I don't think that is, is something that we can discuss, that anybody can give you any figures or any, anything on. I'm afraid that there's no, no good answer for that. Anybody else? Yes?
Could you explain with the new figure that was proposed, how much that would be raised by tax, taxpayers?
Well, we'd have to do some math here.
So.
Um, what would have to be raised? It would be a.
It would be approximate, because there is, you know, different calculations, but it would be approximately four hundred fifty-four thousand, eight hundred ninety-five dollars and ninety-five cents. And that's just basically taking the, the, the difference off.
Yeah, that's, that's not exact, but that's, it's about that.
Oh, yeah.
Any, anybody else didn't, have you spoken already? Anybody else wish, Hannah?
I had a couple of things to follow up on Amber, since I'm also on the budget committee. I mean, she said there's certain things that wouldn't be able to be purchased this year, but still need to be purchased. So, a lot of cutting the budget is just kind of kicking the can down the road. It's, it's going to come back next year. We still need to get a chloride tank for the garage, we still need the fuel tank for the garage, we're still going to need a computer. And your computer might be more expensive if the one we have catastrophically fails and we have to pay to have data, like, resurrected. Um, so, I don't know, I mean, as, as a town employee, it's pretty hard getting along without the confidence of the taxpayers. Like, I understand that, that taxes are high as it is, but it's also just really hard trying to keep basic functions going along for the town without being able to purchase necessary items.
All right? Anybody else?
I've already spoken.
Yeah, but, and let's say if somebody else who hasn't spoken wishes to speak, you would have to go back to.
I just feel that the people that work for us in this town, whether they have the small salary that they have or they're volunteers, they're doing the best they can for us. And to Hannah's point, we should be supporting the decisions. We elect these people to work for us. I think we should be supporting them, uh, financially and otherwise, you know? I, 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 they worked really hard on this, then had to revise it, and now we're asking them to revise it again. I, I think it's too much. I, I think we should support what they come up with. Just my two cents.
Yeah, I agree with that one, you said, but I don't agree that we should let our own self in poverty to support the town, which is what some of these people are doing. So. I, I don't know what the answer is, but I, I know that it's our question, yeah.
I know from recent figures, Athens has one of the lowest median incomes in the county. Also, we have one of the highest tax rates in the county. So, I mean, you're taking a low income and putting it against a high tax rate already. And then you expect us to come up with another huge tax increase? There's a lot of us on fixed income.
Uh, this is just another question, so this is new to me. Um, I, I just feel awed voting on a budget where I don't know where the money's going to be spent. So, if this was voted down, would there be, like, a new proposal with line by lines? And what, what happens if it's voted down? I'm just trying to understand what happens.
We would not have a budget this year. I may take, uh, if we don't, if we don't set a budget today, um, it'll take another month, over a month, uh, to try and do that. And then we're six months into the year. Um, it, it, it's much better to set a budget tonight, and we will work through that. And certainly, anybody that wants to come, when the budget committee and the select board, um, go over this new figure and decide what they want, that absolutely can, and have a say and input into that, uh, during those meetings. So, I don't think that people aren't able to come and talk about that during those times. Sherri?
Um, I'm curious to know whether or not we have any insight into the revenue side, aside from current, from taxes. Um, there's a big decrease in revenues that were non-tax revenues this year. Is that an unusual situation? Was it an unusual situation in the last few years that we had more funding? Do we anticipate more funding in the future? Or are we going to be at this, you know, in this kind of position in terms of additional funding, aside from tax revenues?
Amber, do you want to talk to that?
I don't know. I didn't, there's a question for her.
I mean, it's, so, it, I, I very much doubt there's going to be a surplus from this year to apply to next year.
Right.
And likely, it might be the opposite, given where we're at. Um, it depends on what grants are applied for, what federal and state grant monies we will be getting. Like, there is a big covert project happening, so we will get reimbursement revenue for that. And the way that often works in the budget is that we don't get the revenue until the following year. So, I don't know what the timing of that will be. We just have to see where we're at with grant cycles when it's time to do the budget. And if we haven't been reimbursed for the big covert project yet, we will have been paying for that out of money in the bank. And then it might get put into the budget to basically reimburse that it looks like it's reducing taxes. So, I mean, the budgeting process, it's pretty complex, and it's really, like, we do it to the dollar. Um, yeah. So, but, I mean, it's just, it's hard, I don't know, like, we haven't applied for all the grants that are going to be applied for this year going into next year.
Okay?
Um, I, under the revenues, I didn't see any number. I know we pay, what, over five thousand dollars for a sheriff? But did, do we get revenues for tickets or?
Um, Vermont State Civil fines, right in the middle of the page.
Oh, yeah, man.
That's fifteen hundred in there, which is probably optimistic. We're not getting much fine money.
It's the second section down on the first page, right about here.
Okay. Um, so why, so why do we have it? I mean, besides giving traffic tickets, he's not doing public safety things, correct? I mean, you're the wrong person to ask.
It, well, we have, we have had complaints about speeders before, and it is more to, um, make the roads safe than to, uh, have them, like, everybody in town, a ticket.
On that note, David, how, how often do they actually have to come out to Athens? For instance, um, I'm on the road quite a bit. I, I haven't seen the sheriff on the lower road in months.
Yeah, they just put their hours, they show the hours.
Yeah.
You know, in listening to this conversation, um, I'm wondering how, uh, to go back to a comment that Hannah made about the items that are going to just have to be kicked down the road, as she put it, uh, that we need to get. And how many of these kind of things, these expenses, we could, uh, be, uh, getting state and or federal grants for that we're not able to because we don't have a town plan? Uh, I don't know whether there's an answer for that, but it bothers me that there are finance, financial possibilities that we could take advantage of if we had a town plan. And I feel like that's something that really needs to be addressed, because the situation we're in today, that a lot of us are, are, are rightly disturbed about the business of having to pay higher taxes, is not going to get better. Um, if you have any understanding of, of, of the economy and where it's going to be going, um, it's, it's going to be harder on us. And people are going to continue to balk at, and rightly so, uh, having to pay higher taxes. And I think we have, and I don't know whether this is the, the, a reasonable job for the budget committee to address, we've got to look into alternative ways of addressing our expenses, if there are. And I'm saying that we both know, David, you and I, um, that we, we aren't eligible for state and for federal grants because we don't have a town plan. And if we did, we could, we could, I don't know, Hannah, whether the three items you mentioned that are going to be just kicked down the road if we don't pass this budget, um, whether we could have gotten, uh, money for that. And I think we've got to look into that. I think that the budget committee and or the select board or another body need to really begin to explore, um, the, the importance of a town plan, and it's more than just, uh, being eligible for grants, but also alternative sources of, of money. And I think that, I would ask you folks to really seriously begin to think of that, that we've got to become more imaginative, more creative, and more aggressive in terms of how we raise money for this town. That we can't keep asking the citizenry to do it, because so many of us just don't have the bucks for that.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to say something with the town plan. You were on that committee, and we, you presented it to the town, it was voted down. They, they didn't want a town plan. Maybe it wasn't presented right, I don't know the exact reason. Maybe they thought things were going to happen that didn't. So, yes, we do need a town plan, and I agree with that. But it was very clear that the town didn't, the voters of this town did not want one. It was voted down.
But that, that is not, is off topic of this, yes, the town does not have one.
What, yeah?
Well, we really shouldn't be going back and forth between members here.
Well, I'm, I'm addressing a member of the, uh, the.
You, you need to address the moderator.
Okay, well, moderator can address you.
You can address.
And you can pass on to her what I have to say. What I, all I want to say is that I feel like circumstances are different, that maybe if people understood better the importance of a town plan, and that if they understood that the thing that they have feared, and you and I both know what it is, that they fear that it will autumn, it'll bring zoning to the town, which, which in fact is not true. If there was, maybe we got the select board behind this, now that they see, hey, wait a minute, you know, a town plan is a good thing, and we need to really promote that, we need to be supportive of it, maybe we would pass it. I, Denise, all I'm, uh, David, I'm sorry. All I'm saying is that I feel like this kind of conversation, where we go back and forth, we're not addressing the, we're not taking a larger view.
I just saw what you're saying, but we do need to get on the topic of the, of the budget. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on the budget? On the article? Okay?
Yeah, I, I think, um, I could probably get around voting for a lesser amount, but I really do want to make sure that there's some guarantees on the part of select board, that we're not going to be cutting into, uh, services like road maintenance that could eventually, if we don't maintain, especially thirty-five, could result in liability and, and other problems. So, I'd really like to have some assurances that we're not going to cut our nose despite our face.
I think that the select board will, whatever figure is, is approved, that we will do the best we can for everybody in town. And there may be some things that some people don't agree with, but certainly, anybody can come to the meeting when we have with the budget committee if we, if this budget is approved, um, and where we can. Anybody else? Yes? Dennis?
I'm looking over the expenditures here, and there are some items here that are fixed, with no way we could change them or reduce them or anything. But there are also some, if you take a good hard look, you know, they're not going to be easy choices, but, you know, there are choices here on how to cut the budget. But not everybody's going to be happy, it's not going to be easy. We got to decide what we want to do. And I'd like to go off that a little bit, to what Tim said. I think if we had a town plan way back, we could have avoided maybe the situation we're facing with Taylor Hills. And that's just a plug for the town plan. Okay, that's it, that's all.
All right, anybody else? Are you ready for the question? Yes. Want a ballot? Raise your hand for paper ballot, there are several. So. The figure is seven hundred, uh, five hundred and seventy-four, arguing, three fifty-five, thirty-six. For a budget, yes? Will do it, uh, will approve it? No, will not? Ballot box, vote. Anybody needs assistance? Preston needs assistance? Tom needs assistance? Um, Kate? Kate, go up and get Tom's, and go back and get Preston's.
Think this one's going to work?
I'm a petor for sale.
As far as far as.
Has everybody voted that's entitled to vote? If so, all the care of the ballot box closed, Denise Randall, Kate Hopewell.
Her name's Janet. She's no to us.
Who are you again?
At least somewhere in just the area, we spent that day. We were in to make an offer.
Why not go for ninety? Ninety, buddy, for a license.
Results of the vote, thirty-eight yes, nineteen no. You've approved the figure of five seven four, three five five, and thirty-six cents. Is there any other business prop to come forth at that meeting? Have a motion to adjourn?
I made the motion.
All those in favor? Meeting will stand adjourned.